Good evening, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. Happy New Year. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, pursuant to the general provisions of Articles 3-305, 3-104, I move that we meet in closed session to discuss appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction to perform administrative function and to consult with council.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to go into closed session. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We will see you at 6 o'clock, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. Happy New Year. I would like for us to begin by standing to cite the Pledge of Allegiance. Afterwards, will we please stand for a moment of silence for our first responders and all those serving in armed forces, both in the United States and abroad. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I hope everyone had a very safe, happy, and healthy holiday. Welcome back. We'll start off with our housekeeping items. We have an agenda presented, anyone have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favors, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We have an approval of minutes for the open and closed of December 4th, 2019, and the open session of December 18th, 2019. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
I make a motion, we accept all three.
Have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and seconded, any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept the open and closed December 4th, 2019 minutes and the open session of December 18th, 2019 minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you all very much, appreciate that. We have recognitions.
Oh, right. Please join me up front. Okay, good evening, everyone, it's so good to see you, Happy New Year to everyone. We do have some recognitions this evening, and of course, our first recognition is an award given to a staff member or a volunteer who just keeps on going. And this award is sponsored by Bayview Financial with Chip Brinhem, Wayne Humphreys, and of course, Mark Humphreys. Please come forward and join me as we present this award. So tonight's Energizer Bunny Award is going to Mrs. Cora Ruth. Mrs. Cora Ruth, please come forward. There she is. Our recipient tonight is Ms. Cora Ruth, and she was nominated by curriculum and instruction supervisors, Michael Page and Ms. Amy Smith. Would you please come on forward after I read for just a couple of moments what you said, wonderful things you said about Ms. Cora Ruth. It is with great pleasure, they say, that we nominate Mrs. Cora Ruth for the Energizer Bunny Award. Mrs. Ruth is a critical component of our support team and is always ready to go. She is, in every way, dependable and reliable. She always delivers tasks and projects on time and frequently before the due date and of high quality. She efficiently and effectively handles the demands and workload for multiple content supervisors and expertly supports the K-12 mathematics, K-12 science, and the pre-K programs. Additionally, she's responsible for ADP management, bridge project support, purchase orders, early childhood registration, and a myriad of other duties. She is just a jack-of-all-trades. Mrs. Ruth is cooperative and has an amazing ability to multitask. We're so grateful for all she does and for her willingness to just keep on going. So, I'm gonna ask the supervisors to please come on down, Ms. Smith and Mr. Page. They thank you, Mrs. Ruth, for your endless energy, your effort, and your dedication to the staff and students of Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Congratulations. I'm gonna ask her just now, and I'm gonna ask you, who you have with you?
My daughter and my husband.
Daughter and husband, come on down.
Why you?
For you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next award is the Spirit Award. Now, the Queen Anne's County Public School Spirit Award is presented to an outstanding employee who represents the spirit of education. Tonight's recipient is Mrs. Courtney Sasse from Stevensville Middle School. Ms. Sasse, please come forward. Mrs. Sasse was nominated by Mr. Michael Page, who would like to recognize her for her spirit and dedication to the Science Department at Stevensville Middle School. Mrs. Sasse's enthusiasm towards science has been instrumental in the implementation of the new middle school science curriculum and the instructional shifts to ensure all students and staff are successful. Mrs. Sasse's spirit for science has been seen in her exploration of the new materials and content, her energetic support for student learning, and her willingness to provide additional leadership to her fellow department members. Mrs. Sasse has taken the lead on coordinating many of the department's new initiatives and works with her colleagues to raise student achievement on the Maryland Integrated Science Assessment, or the MISA, as we call it. We're grateful to have her spirit in and outside of the classroom, and we're thankful for her enthusiastic support of science at Stevensville Middle School. Congratulations to that. And I'm also gonna ask you, who you brought with you tonight?
My husband, my two kids, and my parents.
Husband, two kids, and parents, come on down with Mr. Page.
Oh yeah, Dad, uh-huh.
Come on, Norman.
We're here.
We know you.
Congratulations.
Standing by.
Don't worry, this lens does amazing things.
Gonna cut off 10 pounds. 20.
Thank you. Thank you.
And our third award tonight, last but certainly not least, is the Shining Star Award. Queen Anne's County Public Schools is extraordinarily fortunate in the quality and dedication of our employees, and this award recognizes Queen Anne's County Public Schools' employees who shine. And our shining star tonight is Mrs. Jenny Moran, who was nominated by Mrs. Wallace at Stevensville Elementary School. Mrs. Moran, come on down. Congratulations.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Mr. Wallace says that Mrs. Moran is a fabulous employee, a huge asset to the school and the district, and is so deserving of this award and recognition. Mrs. Moran is the cafeteria manager at Suttlersville Elementary, but her dedication and commitment goes far beyond that. In fact, her love for our students and staff is delivered consistently throughout the community. That's an awesome compliment. She's quick to offer any assistance at any level, at any time of day, night, weekday, or weekend. Whether Mrs. Moran is preparing school meals, assisting with other activities such as the dudes' club, PTA activities, or other school functions with the students, with the families, or with the staff, you can always expect her to do it with a smile. No task is too large or too small. She's even been known to assist our students with math problems using real-life situations in the cafeteria, which really, really motivates the kids. That's math in action, right? Real life, authentic learning. Despite the overwhelming amount of work that everyone has to do, Mrs. Moran always finds ways to help her coworkers and others. This is not a single, there's not a single student at Suttlersville Elementary that Mrs. Moran doesn't know by name, and in most cases, she knows the name of everyone in their family as well. She'll never allow a student, or for that matter, the principal, Mr. Wallace, to go hungry. For these reasons and many others, Mrs. Moran is our shining star, and this is just one small way that we can show her how grateful we are to have her as part of the staff at Suttlersville Elementary School. Well done. And, of course, we'd like to know who you brought with you today?
I brought my husband, and my daughter and son-in-law, and my two grandchildren, two grandsons.
Excellent, so come on down, and you've got your fan club at Suttlersville Elementary here. Come on down, everybody who came to support Mrs. Moran, come on down, we'd like for you to be a part of the picture.
Jump right on in here.
He's gonna say we'll jump in the back.
Yep, jump right on in.
Thank you.
And just one more surprise before I let everybody to sit down, we have a special day today for Mrs. Moran, don't we?
Yes.
It's her birthday, so happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that does it for us, for recognitions.
Thank you.
Happy to hear it.
Of course.
It's officially out there.
Yes, it is.
Y'all are welcome to stay. We've got plenty of exciting things going on in Queen Anne's County. The next item on our agenda is board staff involvement. I would like to start, month of December, you know, we had our meeting, December 4th, Dr. Kane and I met with several of the county commissioners to talk about some upcoming issues. I've visited the last six schools, of our 14 schools, finished our school visits. Captain Kelly and I attended the holiday lunch with the retirees, staff, and teachers, luncheon at Fisherman's, it was an excellent meal, we appreciate their hospitality. I think that was it, there was a lot. Lots of school visits, yeah.
We did a lot of stuff. You attended the board Christmas party?
Oh yes, we did. Mr. Smith and I attended the administration building's holiday luncheon, that was very nice, too. Really appreciate your invitation for that, Mr. Paluski. Mr. Smith?
Just one, I've been to a couple of schools, missed one today because of another commitment, but then I see we were nine minutes late, so things work out for a certain reason. But it's impressive, and now, I guess we're getting ready for the budget season, so all hands on deck.
Yes.
I did, as you said, a few things with you and several school visits. I also did attend the first, well, the legislative meeting on Monday, and Wednesday started the legislation, General Assembly period for the state of Maryland. And at almost every MAB legislative committee meeting that we have, it's always centered around the Kerwin Commission and the commission's recommendations, which is, in all of our opinions, the most important thing the General Assembly is doing this session, well, in particular in the education arena. The supporters of the recommendations are trying to change the title of it, we're gonna refer to it as the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, not just Kerwin anymore. And this, the next information I tell you, I have a copy of it to pass out to all the board members. We, as a group and as the public, should be advocating for this to the General Assembly, to ask them to pass and fund these recommendations. MAB has a variety of resources available to help us better understand it and also to better explain it to the public or to our constituents. So the way to do it is to go to the MAB website, and I've got it in here for information, ULMAB.org, and I've mentioned down here how to do it for the public, go to this MAB.org, at the menu bar at the top, go to advocacy, and then click on Kerwin Blueprint Resources. And it'll bring you to some useful, few useful items to help explain this to the public. The first one is 10 simple, clear talking points to explain the initiative. I have a copy of them here, and MAB was passing these out to us, I don't know if we, I'll try to get some more for everyone. They're great little snippets of things to say when people are asking and trying to understand what it's all about, because they hear it and it's all over the newspapers. The next thing that's on that resource list is a pamphlet that actually explains the value of the initiatives. That is entitled, "Why Does This Make Sense for Our Students, Families, Communities, and Businesses Across the State?" So that's a really good piece of information, read through that, because we get inquiries from all kinds of our stakeholders. The third thing I've noticed is a document that outlines what Maryland business leaders are saying about Kerwin recommendations and its projected return on investment. That's important to the public, important to the businesses, so make sure that, and also we can get that off to the chamber, so they understand why this is a good thing for the state and what the return on investment is. And then there's an independent study in that website, too, on, it's called, "An Economic Assessment of Kerwin Commission Recommendations." It's yet another thing that is important. So if you get a chance to read through those things, I know I'm asked a lot of questions periodically about Kerwin, and I'd like to be able to respond to them. And sort of in conclusion, I will, and during our legislative meetings, we talk, we individually talk on what's going on, if we have something key that would be useful for all the 24 districts in the state, and what I am picking up are useful tips that some of the representatives, members of this legislative committee, there's one from each, at least one, from each school district of the 24 in the state of Maryland. And so we're all trying to advocate, so one of them worth mentioning, I heard, meeting Monday, is that several folks, and public and every people, are all talking about how the state and the counties throw a lot of money at education, and what are we seeing for it? They think we're wasting the money. So to resolve part of this question, the Kerwin recommendations also include a major accountability piece. So one of the recommendations in the Kerwin recommendations is to establish an Office of Inspector General for Education, responsible to examine the local boards and to really keep track of how we're spending this money. So that we not only want to make the improvements, but there's also an accountability piece, which is important to the public. And so that's, all of these are recommendations, they haven't been passed yet by the legislature, but it's important that that would be a great one to use in response to those, the naysayers that talk about how we're wasting the money, their money. So anytime, the other thing, this inspector general is going to, is they're going to look at the complaints and any concerns for the public, from the public, about the appropriate use of the funds, and also to, you can explain to the public that there's very strict accountability on this. So as I come to each of our board meetings, if I've heard of any other tips and ways to respond to the public, concerns going on with Kerwin, I will share them all with you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Morissette?
I just attended one thing, it was the Queen Anne's County High School winter concert at the beginning of December. Excellent as usual, Mr. Wright does a great job with those kids.
Lovely, thank you. Dr. Kane?
How much time do I have? I'm kidding.
Two seconds.
I got a lot, so, December was a busy time, and of course, I'm not gonna rehash, we went to several board member visits to our schools, and we had some winter concerts and celebrations at schools that we attended. Of course, we had our Blue Ribbon Recognition for Bayside Elementary School, and you'll hear more about that. I want to talk about a little bit of, a couple of things that are upcoming for January, in case people want to get these on their calendars. First, I'm gonna talk about the kickoff breakfast with the Chamber of Commerce, I'll be giving a presentation on the state of our schools, so I hope to see everybody there on January 16th, that's next Thursday, at 8 o'clock, at the Ken Island Yacht Club. I will also be offering a, I'll be on a panel for, it's called the Women and Girls Mentoring Summit, that's gonna be on January 18th at the University of Maryland in Baltimore County on, it's a Saturday at 10 o'clock. And really, what that is, January is National Mentoring Month, and that is to highlight the importance of mentorship with girls and women, and really to help to facilitate a deep appreciation of their worth and their power. So that'll be on January 18th. On January 15th, we'll have Commissioners Dumanelle and Corkarino over at Mata Peak Middle School, they're going to talk with some of our students, it's the Ask a Commissioner segment, and they'll tape that over at Mata Peak Middle School on January 15th.
What time is that?
That is going to be at 10 a.m. Also, on January 15th, Mrs. Morissette and I will be touring Queen Anne's County High School, the Ag Program, so we're really excited about that. Mr. Tully will be with us, Supervisor for CTE and History, we're excited about that. On January 20th, of course, that is a celebration for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., there'll be celebrations all over, Washington College just sent me a flyer, so there'll be events there as well. On January 23rd and 24th, our History Day Expo and Geography Bee at Stevensville Middle School will be occurring on both of those days. Also, on January 25th, as promised, we have our Blue Ribbon School Tour, so Dr. Salmon will be with us at Bayside Elementary School.
24th or 25th?
24th is what I have on my calendar.
Thank you.
January 24th, Bayside Elementary School.
9:30.
And I have, I put on my calendar 9 o'clock, just to make sure I'm, you know, there in plenty of time. Did you have a question, Ms. Morissette? Okay. Also, just a couple of shout-outs, you know, we have had so much wonderful, positive publicity for things that our students are doing, being awarded lots of statewide awards, and so many things, our CNI supervisors are just all over it, and I'm so grateful for that. I gotta give a shout-out to Mr. Bell, who has been out in the forefront advertising the work of our, both the Ken Island High School and the Queen Anne's County High School dance students, from his Tyler and his Wright's class, our very own Ms. Pedrosa, she was part of a dance performance, she had a masterclass, right?
Yes.
At Maryland's All-State Dance Showcase at Goucher College, that was on January 4th, so wonderful job there, they had wonderful performances. We also have had recently, within the last day or so, shout-outs for our media centers, you know, and sometimes these are areas that you don't hear a lot about, but our media centers are booming, there's lots of good work going on. Our media specialist, Ms. Christine Walters, over at Ken Island High School, was featured in an article recently, and she's talking about all of the wonderful things that she does to engage students, whether we're talking about maker spaces so that they can design and brainstorm various ideas for things, or if we're talking about managing the laptops and pulling small groups or whole classes, wonderful things happening in all of our media centers, they even have a book club over there. And then, of course, our high school band earned All-State honors, so shout-out to Ryan Bachman, he's a senior at Ken Island High School, he earned first chair trumpet in All-State Band, and he was the only one, or we're the only one, on the eastern shore that was represented at the All-States. So congratulations all around, lots of wonderful things going on. And just two final reminders, that February 1st is a Black History Luncheon at Chesapeake College, and that's going to be at 11 o'clock, and my parent, student, and staff advisories will be on February 4th. So thanks to all.
Did we also have, remind me, Mr. Bell, the student won for the postage stamp?
We did.
No, the sticker?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, you do, okay, great, I didn't want to, yes, because-
Yep.
Can we start having our students in here for their recognitions?
We certainly can make an attempt to do that, absolutely.
I know it's hard to get families in here.
But we have, so we, yeah, absolutely.
Definitely need to be recognized. Thank you so much. Mr. Paluski?
I think one of the Queen Anne's County High School students got second chair-
Yes.
All-state.
Yep, we did, and now, let me give you her name, because I don't want to slight her, but she absolutely did, and her name is Courtney Adams. So Ms. Courtney Adams, she's a senior at Queen Anne's County High School, earned second chair spot at the All-State Plan Flute.
It's very hard, being a band mom, I know how, how much time and dedication the students put into it. Mr. Paluski?
Ms. Harper, many of the things that I was going to share have already been said, that's okay, I just wanted to highlight again, attendance at the Ken Island High School winter dance concert was fabulous, was outstanding, and also I attended the Churchill Elementary School winter concert, so I want to give them a shout-out as well, other than that, everything else I was gonna share has been shared.
Great, thank you so much. So our student reports, Ms. Pedrosa, since you're here, please.
So, as we already said, we got the news this past week that Ryan Bachman is first chair trumpet in the band, and also, on Friday, we found out at Goucher College that Gabrielle Pfeiffer is an All-State dancer, and we don't have many All-State dancers from the shore. So January is a busy month for testing at KIHS, with finals and standardized testing taking place. This week, we have had the MISA for science students and the MCAP for 10th grade English, and they've been happening over the past couple days and tomorrow. Also, our government classes next week, on January 13th, 14th, 15th, and the 16th, will take the government HSA, so the 10th graders are very busy right now. Later this month, our finals will be on December 24th and the 27th, and then we switch semesters on the 30th. Besides testing, on January 22nd, we have our Welcome to KIHS presentation, which is held in the auditorium every year for rising 9th graders to come learn about scheduling, about the school, they can talk to administrators and teachers after the presentation and their guidance counselor for the following year. And starting after that, our rising 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders will be doing their own scheduling for next year, over the next couple months, and then, finally, we're all closed on the 20th and the 28th and 29th.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Shannon Phillips from Queen Anne's County High School is not here, but in her report, what's happened, arrived back from winter break, musical announcement of "You're a Good Man," Charlie Brown, was made for the spring musical. What we're looking forward to, the end of the semester final exams are January 24th and 27th, the all-shore auditions, all-shore state band is January 25th, and the solo and ensemble festival for the band is February 19th and 20th, that's what she has written on her report. Next up, citizen participation and public comment. Mr. Smith?
We ask all speakers to keep in mind the following, speakers are assigned a roster including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length, comments longer should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to the matter of general policy at which award us authority. Comments about action or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or the board president. If you have specific questions, the board will make sure the appropriate staff members respond to your questions. The board respects your desire and the right to convey any messages freely, but asks the courtesy of this board and citizens to show respect to all. And the first person we have signed up is Richard McNeil.
Welcome to 2020.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and it's gonna be a new decade for the good of everybody, right?
I hope so, sir.
I want to start off by congratulating the two students, Ryan and Courtney. I think it's a great honor to represent the eastern shore, but represent Queen Anne's County in this endeavor. One of the things that, you know, with all the holiday concerts and performances-
and performances and so forth, I was able to attend about six. And it's just great to see the talent, starting at the elementary programs, right on up through the high school. And not only for the students who are doing that, but for the staff members who are bringing those talents out. And I've always enjoyed going into a dance studio or into a art studio to see how those talents are being pulled out of the students, so to speak, and just giving them the encouragement to go forward and so forth. So, congratulations to them. And to Mr. Bell, as I said, I think last time, appreciate what his efforts to get it publicized in a newspaper too, because we don't really always see the good in students that are coming out of our schools. You know, I see it and you see it, but not the community all the time. But our legislative effort also, just want to, what Captain Kelly was saying, seems like there's going to be an awful lot of educational bills or bills that are going to be impacting schools and school systems going into legislation for some reason this, this year. My biggest concern on that is even with the blueprint or the current report, I appreciate the new name actually, because I think it's going to move Maryland in the next five, six, seven years, as we look forward to that. But with those things, I'm always concerned about mandated programs that come out that are not funded. And the responsibility for that falls on the locals, which we know we have a challenge just maintaining our own budget and, which is you're in the process of getting ready to start. So, as we, as we get into that, I encourage everybody to be a part of that and be informed in terms of what's going on in there. We try to inform our members of what we are supporting, both for our pensions, but also for the schools. Our hearts are still here, folks. We may be retired, but we're still, we're still here behind everything that's going on. As we, as we talk about the budget process, thank you for what you do to support our healthcare package. Also, want to mention that the mentor program that I'm a part of and several other folks are, I think is very important. We've seen some great results from that. It's us helping new folks get acclimated to this role of being a professional teacher in the classroom. And it's, I can remember back to when I started, we didn't have a lot of the standards. We didn't have a lot of the pressure that's on for the accountability. And I think accountability pushes people to excel. But at the same time, when we've got new teachers coming out of college and just learning the, the idea of how to teach and how to meet the relationships with children, you throw that extra one on top of that, I think that it's just adds a whole new picture to it. So, the mentor program, as far as I'm concerned, really helps support that. You know, we have the opportunity to meet with those individuals over 30 times during the year. And we probably meet with them more than anybody else does, just because of time and everything else. So, appreciate your support of that and continued support in that area, in that aspect. We did have a very nice luncheon. Thank you, ladies, for attending. And it was great to see some folks that we had not seen. A lot of our retirees come out for that particular one. It's kind of a special holiday kind of a deal. And I think we had a good time. I did. And we had good food and good fellowship and it was just great to see those. We are trying very hard to incorporate and educate the ones who don't live close enough to attend. We have a large contingent of retired folks in North Carolina and Florida. Why? I don't know, but somebody will have to tell me that.
Warm.
Warm. But we're trying very hard to keep them informed because, again, it's, when we have a legislative issue that we want to address, we try to send that out now electronically so we can get the support back and so forth. So, again, thank you for your, your time. And I know as you get busy with the budget that's coming up and meeting with the commissioners and working relationship there, my heart will be with you, my thoughts will be with you. I'm not doing it, so.
There you go.
Somebody else is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil.
That's all we have signed up.
Anyone else would like to comment?
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Wright, please.
Can you give me your name and address or?
Would you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Eric Johnson. I live at.
I'm sorry. I said, right.
That's okay.
Okay.
I have been called first, so.
I did that in the beginning when I first met you. I kept calling you Mr. Wright, Eric Johnson. My apologies.
It is quite all right. I live at.
Mr. Wright for something else.
Maybe.
Where do you live, sir?
Hopefully to my wife. 216 Frederick Drive in Centerville.
Thank you so much.
So, I am actually here tonight covering this meeting for the Record Observer and Bay Times as a stringer. And as a side note on that, I credit my education with Queen Anne's County Public Schools for my ability to multitask and work full-time for the county and do that on the side. But being here tonight, it would be remiss of me not to just very quickly say thank you, a long overdue thank you, for the support that we received for what was the Haunted Trap House Project this past October. Lots of amazing things we could share, but I did want to go on record as just saying that Dr. Kane, Sid Pender, Matt Evans, and Principal Michelle Carey were just amazing. There were so many things that came up at the last minute. And the fact that we discovered, as we had already advertised our dates, that the fall festival that Canard Elementary was having fell on one of the same evenings. And I think I got probably 20 or 30 phone calls from people saying, oh my gosh, this is not good. The school's going to freak out. None of that happened. And I just wanted to say that from the very top level, Dr. Kane, her support from the very beginning, all the way down to the middle school, some of that's personality-based. Those folks, I know them all and they're awesome, but I think it speaks highly to the collaborative nature that the school system engages from bottom up and top down. And just wanted to say thank you. And the last thing on that was, if you did not hear, on the very last evening of the project, we had a lady from President Trump's Office of National Drug Control Policy show up unannounced and said, this is a model program. And the fact that you have the continuum of your school system, your health system, your community, your law enforcement, et cetera, I think you guys need to take this nationally. So, we've been invited, and I think it's July, to speak at a national conference to push this initiative. So, anyway, that was longer than I intended, but I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And would you let us know how it goes?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Happy New Year.
Oh, hello.
So good to see you, Ms. Phillips. I already read your report. It was lovely. Thank you for sending it over. Thank you for joining us.
I'll tell you what committees you volunteered for while you weren't here.
Several.
Nice.
All right. Next on the agenda are presentations. 6.01, Access of ELLs.
And we have Ms. Susan Walbert coming forward. She's Supervisor for Title I, Title III, Early Learning, Migrant Education, and a whole host of other things. Thank you, Ms. Walbert.
Yeah, she wants to join on that, Ms. Walbert. Walbert, sorry. Keep, I keep seeing Walbert. I apologize. Walbert. I didn't even, I didn't even.
Good.
Notice. I just tell everybody it's my twang.
Yeah.
I know that. All right. So, Board President Harper, members of the board, Dr. Kane, exec team, for the record, my name is Susan Walbert. Tonight, I'm wearing my hat of Title III with our English learners. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to give you an overview of what access for ELLs is, what's involved with us preparing for this, the administration of this assessment. I'm going to share with you tonight our current English learner demographics and also an overview of what access for ELLs is. I put this, our recent, most recent data in a chart form because I wanted you to see how the bars have grown over the last three years. These are our English learners, our total number in our county in 2017, 18, and now 19, where we're around 325 with students. That number 325 is, has decreased by three and I guarantee you tomorrow it'll, it'll increase by four. So, but that's where we, our roundabout number is 325 this year. So, our students, we, we take great pride in their first languages. They are important for us to build upon when we are teaching them English. I wanted to give you an idea of the demographics of the languages that our students are coming with. The majority of our students speak Spanish. We have about 3% Vietnamese and that's about six kids. And then, there's usually, it's about one in there with, with the other languages. So, the majority of our, of our English learners are Spanish speakers. It's important to recognize that those Spanish speakers, majority of those students are coming from Guatemala. We do have, the next highest is El Salvador. And then, only about nine from Mexico. I think that's important for you to know because a lot of times, our students kind of get.
Lumped to the same.
Lumped. Yeah, everybody's, yeah, most, most of our English learners are from Mexico and they really are not. So. And you realize that each one of them have their own dialects and have their own way of, I mean, the word ice cream has three different words. Right. From Central America to South America. And it's all Spanish, but it's just the words that they use. And they definitely have different cultures. Right. And it's, it's, these are some resilient children that, learning the language, they're just amazing. And we so enjoy seeing the results of them. I did a chart here to let you know, school-level data, and this is where our 325 comes from, but I wanted you to see the, how they're broken throughout the county. You can see that our highest population is in Sudersville Elementary with 74. Oftentimes, you'll see more at the elementary level as they progress through, though they exit out of our program. We do have a large population at Queen Anne's County High School. Our high school students are often our most challenging. They have as, the fewer years to, to not only acquire the language, but they have a lot of responsibilities as well with, with acquiring their credits.
How long, if they're in this program, I see it changes through the different schools. Two years, three years, then they're not in the program any longer?
So, they have to.
I know it varies.
They have to acquire the language. And I'll show you, this is what the test is that I will explain to you tonight that allows them to exit. Research tells us that it should be about six years. It should take them about six years to acquire the language. These are the proficiency levels. So, students come in speaking no language. We, we would consider them Level Ones. As they progress, they start to learn words and phrases. Then, they move to a beginning level where maybe short sentences or phrases in English. Then, on to a Level Three where they certainly can communicate with their peers. And then, they're starting to learn content language. At a Level Four, their language is expanding, much more specific. And Level Five, they're bridging and they, and research is telling us that by Level Six, they should be communicating orally and written, just like their other peers that started out speaking English. So, what is access? So, access for ELLs is the, this is the assessment of how we measure their proficiency. It's available to WIDA Consortium members. There's 37 states that are in this consortium and Maryland is one of them. It's administered. Walbert, excuse me. What's WIDA? WIDA. So, I'm sorry. So, it started out being Wisconsin and another state and it, it morphed into just saying WIDA. It does stand for something, but what it stands for really doesn't, isn't a good explanation of what this is.
Thank you.
And I apologize for not spelling that out. But it started out with two states and they came together and decided, how are we going to measure whether or not our students are acquiring the, the language? And they started and then it quickly morphed into now 37 states. So, we assess kindergarten through grade 12. And it's given annually. It's actually, today is the very first day of the window. It meets U.S. federal requirements for our Every Student Succeeds Act for monitoring and reporting our EL progress through proficiency. And you're going to hear from Ms. Forbes tonight and she's going to show you how this appears on our Maryland report card. It's anchored in the WIDA English Language Development Standards and it assesses four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So, we're assessing each one of our English learners in those four areas. The state of Maryland came together and decided on an exit criteria which each state can do. So, if a child reaches a Level 4.5, then they are considered exited from the program. We do hold on to them for the, for two years after that. So, they're, they're considered reclassified. So, the first year after they exit, they're reclassified Ones. And then, the second year, they're reclassified Twos. We still monitor them, certainly not providing them direct service, but checking on grades, checking on attendance, just checking to see how they're progressing. The assessment window is January 8th through February 26th. My team is out there now along, I will be at Kent Island High School very soon to support their assessment. They are working on getting those Chromebooks and laptops ready. It is an online assessment and getting all of our students assessed in time. We usually get our results back around May and that's when the, the fun begins where we really do some deep data dives completed by our EL team, but also school teams. This is now, this was, this was something that was always paid attention to, but it's even more in the, it's more in the limelight now that it is part of each one of the, each one of our schools' Maryland State Report Card. The one thing to mention is, a school has to have a student group of 10 or more for it to be part of their report card. So. And every school has that now? Not every school. There's a few schools on the island. I believe that Mata Peak Elementary is at nine. And I think maybe Mata Peak Middle might be, might be under that mark two. And those numbers happen, we have an October 31st date that we enter our student data. So, it has to be by then that those students are there. So, they might end up with 10, but they might, we might not assess them. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay.
This is, it's got to be very complicated. And if you get a high school student that comes in and they have all these graduation requirements, I'm not sure. How do you all work that? Do they just get a certificate or are they able to earn a diploma?
They are able to earn, earn a diploma. And we have several success stories with students coming in. Many of our students have been to school and have credits that can transfer. Other students come with, with nothing. It is quite challenging. This, this week, we've had a couple of students who have, they've reached the age of 18 and, and are now working. So, they have, they, they're able to leave and they, and that's what they chose to do. We are, Mr. Tully and I are working really closely together to increase our CTE programs and increase our, our English learners in that. Not that college is obviously a choice, but it also careers. We know how important they are as well, too. So, we are working with that. So, we do have a lot of students that will come in with English credits or come in with other credits and, and they are able to meet the requirements in the four years. And we have others that they might stay for five to, to finish up. Many, many dedicated students that, that truly appreciate the fact that they are able to, to receive this education. But it is our most challenging, it is our most challenging efforts, but we work really hard to, to support those guys.
It's hard for them socially and everything at that age.
It's a lot of, a lot of resilience and dedication on their part, for sure. What else? Questions?
Recognizing that our focus is our students from a holistic approach, especially for these that are coming in later in high school, is there a way that the community is pulling the parents in? So, it's a total immersion, both at home and at school?
Sure. So, we have, there are definitely, my department feels that that's huge to involve our parents. Many of our students come to our schools during the day and you know that if you practice something, you get better at it, right? So, so they are communicating with their peers and they're talking in English and things, and then they go home and they don't. There's nothing wrong with that. We're not saying that they, they should certainly keep that first language going and it, by far, makes them so marketable to be bilingual. And what a mind to be able to switch. I'm so amazed. Every time I get in a room with somebody that can, that can code-switch like that and move from one language to another. But we do, do some parent events where our parents can come in and understand. We had a parent event where they came in just to understand what this assessment was, that, that this is an assessment that's going to measure how well your, your students are speaking English. And they are amazed at, they are always amazed at what we do for their, for their children. But they also, it's, it helps them to understand how they can support them as well. We had a, there was a parent that, with technology now, you can, you can translate anything just about. I mean, we have that, we have those abilities. But there was a mom that wasn't sure how to answer an email. And we did a little, little PD for the, for the, for the parents to show them email and how they can access it and how they can respond to the teachers, because the teachers could, can click a button and then their words are translated. She was in tears. She had received like 15 emails and wasn't able to respond and was so upset thinking that, that they think that I'm not interested in what they have to say. So, what a breakthrough. Just little. Just little things like that. So yes, we do involve the parents as much as we can, and, and they are, are so incredibly appreciated.
Side in on the Churchill Elementary School, parent and child. They have the morning sessions, and wow, I was just taken aback, just very receptive, open, and, and I'm grateful we have those programs there to, to help these families that are here. It was just marvelous to watch.
We actually did a small thing, but we had our parents come, it was, it was a Title One event, but we had our parents tape themselves encouraging the students that were going to take this WIDA access. So they would bring tears to your eyes, every single one of them, but their moms and dads sitting in front of the little camera, and they're saying, I don't know what they're saying, because I don't speak Spanish, but it is words of encouragement for them to do well on this assessment. Amazing, so. Can't help but think that that child's not going to, you know, perform a little bit better that mom or dad just said, hey, do your best.
Such a great encouragement. Mary Ann, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, and while it too, I'm glad that you brought up the connection. While it's not synonymous, but there is heavy involvement, collaboration. I'm grateful that Ms. Walbert is, you know, supervisor over Title One and migrant program EL, I mean, because there is some relationship between the three. And her resources are able to be spread across multiple domains. So they do a great job involving families and providing supports from families and collaborating with different agencies across the county and the state to ensure that our families are getting supported. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Are you picking up some Spanish while you're at it?
That's why we have apps. There's so many apps.
Don't translate perfectly, though.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. The next presentation, the Performing Arts, Mr. Bell. Good evening, Happy New Year.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kane, members of the board, student members, Mr. Paluski, executive team. My purpose here this evening is to provide you with updates on our vision, the high-quality professional development that our teachers have been receiving, our statewide and national awards, National Arts Honor Society accomplishments, our new Advanced Placement 2D and 3D art course offerings, and Art Scene 2020. Now, I'd like to start this off with a three-minute video clip so that you can actually see a lot of the accomplishments that we've been having across the district. So I'm going to play this for you.
Well, art is exploding in Queen Anne's County. We recently had, at both of our high schools, we have art scene.
Yeah, I've got to give it up to the art community.
It really was something to rival, I'm provoked, so it was really something to rival art scene.
Give that again to me, I will make you famous. Would you ask me?
Make me a star.
And make no mistake about it, that is my plan, is to not only make those talented students, but also the very talented teachers stars in our district. And for me, building the capacity within all these different programs, it started for me with these three pillars: collaboration, visual journaling, and building relationships. These are the three pillars that have become the foundation for all that we do. And for me, it's about creating the most collaborative culture where teachers are teaching with authenticity, and it's about student choice and student voice. Now, in order to do this, we also needed to change the face of professional development by bringing in some of the nation's best. I started out with bringing in David Modler, who's an expert in visual journaling and a renowned artist and a professor at Shepherd University. Back that up with bringing in Gail Danley, who's an international slam poetry champion. She's also on the visiting artist list at the Kennedy Center to work with our performing arts teams. This summer, in collaboration and thanks to Dr. Kane, Sean Kenna at Stevensville Middle School, Mr. Pender, they were all in collaboration with Alicia Lee, our fine arts supervisor for the state, to bring us MC3, which was a week-long professional development program for arts educators across the state, led by master artists taught in studio environments to awaken the artists in each of our teachers and bring everyone up to date on the latest artistic techniques. Now, where did all this get us? We got a clean sweep at the Academy Art Museum Awards from both Queen Anne's County High School and Kent Island High School taking home all the prizes. We also had about, close to a dozen students attend Portfolio Night at the Academy Art Museum for the very first time. First time ever we had representation at the Walters Art Museum with a few schools attending there. Ms. Calloway's student artist Sophia earned a spot at the BWI Airport Exhibit. And Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. This was huge. We had our first 10 winners ever in the district. Out of 340,000 works of art across the East Coast, these 10 were selected from both schools. And past notable Scholastic Art winners include Andy Warhol, Kay Walkingstick, Sylvia Platt, Stephen King, Nick Cannon, and Zick Posen, to just name a few. So they're in some pretty elite company. And in one year, we revamped the entire visual arts curriculum to create a scaffolding scope and sequence, which brings us up to state and national standards. And with Mr. Paluski's support, with Dr. Kane, we sent four of our high school teachers to AP training to bring Advanced Placement 2D and 3D Art and Design courses to the district for the very first time. I also started asking teachers for their stories, stories about their students. And when they started sending them to me, I started writing the district's first-ever Arts Teen of the Week columns, if you've noticed them in the local newspaper. They've been exploding. In November, I was humbled and honored to be selected as the Maryland State Department of Education's Art Leader, in addition to be selected to deliver various presentations across the state. Now, I will say this, on a side note, Dr. Kane and Mr. Paluski have been very generous with their time, allowing me to shoot some video clips of them, and the Seal of Biliteracy video, it was just used by the state, the state facilitator for world languages to all state supervisors and to state superintendents so that they could show them what a model superintendent had to promote those programs. So it was used across the state. So thank you for your time. It went over big.
Thank you for your leadership.
Oh, yeah. Now, in addition to sharing art scene successes across the state, I was recently invited to be a national presenter at the NAEA Convention in Minneapolis, Minnesota, where I wrote a grant, I'm in charge of Title IV grants as well. And four teachers are going with me, all expenses paid, for the very first time, their principals selected the teachers, to the NAEA Convention. So we'll be heading there in the spring to spread all of the great work we're doing in the district across the entire nation, which is very exciting. Dance, man, they've had quite, quite the year. I rode the bus with both dance companies in, a couple months ago, and we went to Salisbury University, and that was the first time I got to see these master classes in, in action. It was pretty amazing. And both dance teams got to perform with the Salisbury University Dance Company in front of all state supervisors that were there. So that was very exciting. And then, of course, Goucher this past Friday night, and Skylar, you guys simply rocked it, just unbelievable performance. Kent Island High School was selected, this is the second time in a row that they were selected to perform in the evening edition, which is outstanding. And Ms. Wright had her third All-State Dancer, and congratulations to Gabby Pfeiffer. Bands, they've also had a big year. Dr. Kane already, already mentioned the, the great awards that they've just received. Congratulations to Queen Anne's County Bands. The March Lions are doing some amazing things as well. Kent Island High School's choir, they also attended the Baltimore Arts Festival, which was amazing. And let's not leave out our media specialists. They swept the State Conflict Resolution Bookmark Art Contest, and they made a point of even including a slide with a Q and A saying which district had the most submissions and the most winners. It was Queen Anne's. So I got to give it up for them. And National Art Honor Societies. So speaking about them, this is a very exciting announcement. Ms. Zeiler's student artist at Queen Anne's County High, Cara Brown and Jenna Hauser, both earned spots for the first time ever in NAHS National Exhibition in Arlington, Virginia, that runs January 27th through April 10th. Cara Brown also won the state bookmark contest, and of course Heather Eflin, you know, won our, as our music teacher, a Teacher of the Year honors. So very, very excited about that. And if I'm practicing what I preach, which is trying to stay true to the message of every one of our teachers should stay an artist, in collaboration with the Queen Anne's County Arts Council and Rick Stripmater, we've created a first-ever faculty art show, and you're all invited. Saturday, March 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM is the opening night, and I'm, you know, I'm excited to see what the art teachers bring. Last but certainly not least, Art Scene. Art Scene 2020 is going to be kicking off like fireworks again at both ends of the district, they're in the same week, on different nights, so everybody can attend. April 21st at Queen Anne's County High, and then April 23rd at Kent Island High. All free to the public, all feeder schools will be participating, so it's an exciting night of the, the visual arts there. And last but certainly not least, I just want to thank the board, Dr. Kane and Mr. Paluski for, you know, for all your support and allowing me to showcase just a taste of all the wonderful things tonight that are happening for the arts in Queen Anne's County. It's my philosophy that if we win, we all win together and as a team, and we have broken new ground in every single content area. So very proud of the hard work and dedication of our talented teachers and our students, and thank you very much for having me, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Looking forward to all of it.
All right.
So awesome.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the Maryland Report Card. Ms. Forbes.
As Ms. Forbes comes forward, I'd just like to give a shout out to Sedexo, who did the catering for our holiday luncheon. All of our central office staff commented on how delicious the food was, so I'd just like to take that opportunity. Mr. Pender helped to organize that, so thanks to Mr. Pender and Ms. Julie and Sedexo.
It was very nice. Good evening, Happy New Year.
Hi, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for having me.
For Christmas.
Yeah, thanks, it was lovely. So thank you, Dr. Kane, board members. Again, it's always a pleasure to be here. My name is Julie Forbes, I'm the Supervisor of Accountability Assessment and Data Management, and tonight I am going to speak with you a little bit about the 2019 Maryland School Report Cards. And it's exciting, it really folds in all of our content areas, all of the amazing things happening at our schools. It connects to both of the presentations you already saw tonight. And so just as a quick introduction, so our accountability system is authorized by the Every Student Succeeds Act, otherwise known as ESSA, which really develops, to develop plans, those accountability plans that, that encompass a number of different aspects that support our students, that we can continue to really improve and make strides for our students. So the Maryland Accountability System has taken basically what's authorized under ESSA, and we have created the Maryland Report Card System, which is a really great way of communicating with the public, the different components of, you know, many of the things happening in our schools. Under No Child Left Behind, there was really that emphasis mostly on English and mathematics. And the great thing about our new accountability system is it looks at a lot more components. It continues to really focus on English and mathematics, but it also looks at some other pieces that we're going to review tonight. So we're going to really focus on the Maryland Report Cards, which we currently have two years of report cards, and, and what goes into those documents. They're available to the public, they became available in December, and they're all available online. So each school and local system receives a report card, and each school is assigned a star rating, as long as they meet the minimum recording, reporting requirements, which we'll go into in just a little bit. The schools, again, are awarded stars from one to five, a percentile rank, which basically tells us, when you look at all of the schools at that level across the state, where do they rank compared to other schools? And then each school has the ability to earn a certain number of points. For most of our schools, it's 100, for middle schools, it's 96.5, and that's going to move up to 100 next year. And we'll talk about what, what comprises those points. And then there's just all sorts of accountability data online that shows us how our student groups are performing, equity information, how we're doing towards closing the achievement gap, and really improvement from the prior year. So new this year, the Academic Progress Indicator has the addition of the Science Proficiency Score. So we gave the MISA Science Assessment last year in grades five and eight, and so that's an addition in the Academic Progress Indicator. And we also are going to see results from the Maryland School Survey. So the first year the school survey was administered was last year. It was administered to our educators and also our students in grades five through 11. And so based on the results of those surveys, each school receives a certain number of points as well. And then, of course, because we now have two years of report cards, you can see improvement from the prior year. So there's a lot that goes into the report card calculations that ultimately gets you to that star rating. In the top right of the slide, you can see kind of the basic piece of how schools earn stars. So there's a total number of possible points, and then it's calculated how many each school earned, and then based on that percentage, stars are awarded. So if a school earns 75% or greater of the points, they earn five stars. And 60% or greater, less than 75, four stars, and so on. And so you can see how those stars are earned. And they were assigned last year, so this is the second year we have those star ratings. And there's just some examples on the slide of how those are calculated.
Ms. Forbes, can you enlighten me, or maybe you don't know, why they have maximum number of points for middle schools to be less than elementary and high school?
I can, yeah.
It's 3.5, you know, off.
It's basically a placeholder. So this year is going to be the first year they administer the Social Studies VIII Assessment. So, this year's gonna be the first year they administer the Social Studies VIII Assessment. And so, they basically have put a placeholder in, 'cause it's gonna be worth 3.5 points. That's a great question. And so, next year, that'll be 100 possible. Yeah, so that will increase. And again, so this just kind of breaks down, you know, how schools earn those points, the percentile rank, and then just gives some examples there. These are the different indicators on the report card. So, all schools have an academic achievement indicator, and this looks at performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics, specifically looking at student proficiency, which, you know, we talk about regularly, and I presented some of that earlier this year in the academic indicators presentation. It also looks at average performance levels. So, there's a certain number of points awarded for proficiency, but also they take all of the student scores and come up with an average. And based on the average score, there's also points assigned for that. The Academic Progress Indicator only applies to elementary and middle schools. And this one looks at student growth in English Language Arts and Math. So, this is a different way to look at test scores and test results, and really what students are learning. And so, this focuses, again, much more on growth. Did students make growth from the prior year? And if so, is it what was expected when compared to other students in Maryland?
So, they do growth, are they going by the, when the fifth grade moves up to the sixth grade?
Yeah.
Or that, only the fifth grade each year?
So, it actually looks at individual students. So, you have to have at least two years of scores as an individual student, and they actually calculated out student by student. And they look at the prior year and then the current year and see if there was growth there. And there's actually a pretty complicated calculation that goes with it, 'cause it's compared to, they look at all students across Maryland, and then look at our students and say, did they make the expected growth when compared to all students in Maryland? So, that one's a bit complex. There's a lot of pieces to this. And I think we're really working to support our principals and our school leaders to be able to, you know, really work with us, with our staff, and also work with, you know, our parents and our students to really understand the system, 'cause there's so much to it, and how these calculations are broken out.
How that, to indicate the growth, is it, they take a test one year, and the same test the next year?
Yeah, so, let's say you had a fourth grade student, so they would look at their third grade English Language Arts score on the MCAP assessment, and then how they did the following year in fourth grade on English Language Arts.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Different testing.
Yeah, for the grade level, and see if there was growth there.
See if there's any improvement.
Yeah. And so, when that, that's a really great thing, is you may have a student who may not be proficient yet, but they may be making growth. Sometimes we have students who, you know, are still far behind that proficiency mark, but they're still making growth in that year. And so, what it captures is for those students. And on the other end of that, you could have a student who's already proficient, but we wanna keep pushing them as well. And so, it really is capturing the growth, so not just looking at who's at grade level, but even in, you know, in addition to those who are at grade level, who, where are our students, and are they continuing to make in growth at all levels, even if you may not see it in the proficiency numbers? It's certainly a different way of looking at those scores. So, again, they look at credit for completion of well-rounded curriculum. The next indicator's English Language Proficiency, just like Mrs. Walbert was just sharing. So, we look at how our English learners are performing. And again, this one's really looking at growth. So, we're looking at our English language learners, and are they making growth on the English language from the year prior? So, they have to have at least two years of test scores for that as well. The School Quality and Student Success Indicator looks at chronic absenteeism, which is that if students miss 10% or more of the school year. This one is the addition of the school's score on that Maryland survey, which was first administered last year, and also access to a well-rounded curriculum. The graduation rate, pretty self-explanatory, we're looking at graduation rates. And the Readiness for Post-Secondary Success Indicator looks at the percent of students completing high school, but in addition to that, also have done something beyond that, and we'll go into that, 'cause there's a whole list of indicators, and they just need to meet one of those things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't Queen Anne's County have one of the highest graduation rates in the state of Maryland?
We do.
It has the highest. And we've had that for several years running.
I think we're going three, four.
Queen Anne's County.
Queen Anne's County.
Both our high schools.
Ken and both of them.
Both our high schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for pointing that up. So, the next slides will just break down how the points are earned for each indicator. So, the Academic Achievement Indicator, which is possible for all school levels, there's a total number of 20 points that are possible. And then, this shows the breakdown of how those points are assigned, and 30 points for high school. The Academic Progress Indicator is elementary and middle schools only, and that's the one we just talked about, where we're looking at that growth, but also well-rounded curriculum. And you can see right now, so for elementary, there's 35 points possible. Right now is middle, it's 31.5, and this is where they're gonna add in the 3.5 for the eighth grade social studies assessment, once it's administered this year in the spring for the first time.
We do have well-rounded curriculum, and that's where the central office comes in, right? I mean, any, if any places that we're not scoring the best we can on that, that's where we would have to have some input, and let's get the rights.
Yeah, and well-rounded curriculum for elementary and middle, if you look at the individual school report cards, which are all available online, we score quite high in this area. So, our students are receiving those courses that they need to, to be considered well-rounded in the elementary and middle schools.
Okay, so we are meeting all we can.
Absolutely. So, in elementary, for an example, within the fine arts that they have to, within physical education as an example, health as an example. So, we get credit for students that are engaged in those courses. And that's what, that's a large component of making up the well-rounded. So, yes, Captain Kelly, without putting, you know, words in your mouth, all those other curriculum supervisors. And that's one of the things about a well-rounded curriculum, it's that, as Ms. Forbes said, a shift from No Child Left Behind, very focused on math and reading, that we believe that all these other courses are important as well for the whole child.
Progress in Achieving English Language Proficiency, again, looks at our English learners, our English Language Learner students, and are they making growth from the previous year? And in order to receive points for this category, Mrs. Walbert had mentioned this as well in her presentation, you need to have a cohort of at least 10 students for it to be reportable. And that's also for student confidentiality purposes. So, some of our schools receive earned points in this category, and some do not, just based on the number of students who qualifies English learners at their school. School Quality and Student Success, this applies to all of our schools. Again, this looks at chronic absenteeism. It looks at the, again, that Maryland School Survey. The student survey, the school has the possibility of earning seven points from that, based on the responses from students, and from educators, three points for a total of 10. And for this one, the well-rounded curriculum, again, elementary schools, this is the percent of students enrolled in certain courses. Same thing for middle school. And for middle school, it actually looks at the whole range of grades six through eight. And for high school, it's students who are completing high school but enrolled in those other opportunities. So, it may be an AP course, participation in dual enrollment, the CTE programs, those kind of things are considered well-rounded for this category.
Mr. Peluski, an IB course?
IB is International Baccalaureate.
Do we offer it?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
It would be wonderful if we did. It would be, it would be fabulous, which leads to an IB diploma. I mean, it's a very internationally obviously recognized, wish we could put that in the budget, that would be great.
So, we have CTE courses for IB.
It would be a...
Something to shoot for.
Yes.
Captain Kelly.
Hey, that philosophical thing, and I go to you for this. They do this, the state of Maryland created this requirement for a well-rounded student. Now, is that, is that being beneficial to our students when they had to post it to graduate education? I mean, we're, are the colleges starting to look at maybe the states that do this kind of thing? What use is it once they finish Queen Anne's County?
Well, I don't know...
Other than being a well-rounded student, I'm good with that. I'm not saying it's a bad program.
Right. And I think a lot of it, especially at the, at the middle school level, it is about experience, it is about interest, it is about exploring an area, so that when you get to high school, you can then start to specialize in a career pathway, as an example, into higher ed. But as far as a higher education requirement, that they're looking specifically at well-rounded at a, at a middle school, I've not seen that as any...
No, high school. I'm talking high school. Because these, are there, are the colleges starting to say, hey, we would rather have a well-rounded than just a math-science? I'm not finding that's true. So, I'm trying to figure out why, other than it's a great idea. Is it useful for Maryland to be doing this? And it's ESSA, or all the, all the states are doing all of this?
What you're asking, is it benefiting the students?
Correct, yeah. Is it, other than right here in our school system, but I'm thinking about after they leave, is it a benefit?
I would certainly argue that it is hugely beneficial for students. You know, one of the things that this emphasizes, and often in, in school system budgets, one of the things in the past that often gets cut was fine arts programs. And so, what this portion is, this forces us to say, look, that's, that's important as well. And if kids experience those other different areas, you know, the creativity side, the, you know, we want our kids to be physically active and physically, that just leads to, you know, a better global graduate, if you will, that as they enter society, they come with a whole variety of skills.
Okay. It also helps build confidence and character.
Absolutely.
Team building.
I mean, you know, if you just look at Mr. Bell's presentation, and look at all the things that our kids are doing, just to use arts as an example, and how they're working both sides of their brain, that, no matter what career path they choose, they're gonna be better off because of it.
I agree totally on the whole concept. I'm just wondering if anybody, if the colleges are looking at anything like this?
They always do.
Because right now, the colleges don't. I think they look more at the, I don't know what you guys are finding, but it's hard to find, other than you go to a specialized school, like a music school or something.
I would think those transcripts hold more weight than those that are lacking.
Better way?
When they're lacking in students. I would think that well-rounded transcript reflects better for that student when they're considering the student against this student, who's not coming as prepared or from a curriculum in that transcript.
I would hope, that was what I'm trying to find out, if that does hold more weight.
I found that with both of my daughters. All the places, all the colleges that they went to, and the experience they had growing through Queen Anne's County High School, I mean, all the schools, you know, Kent Island, and graduating here, and moving forward. And I've, every college we went to, they were, you know, such a small county, and look, you know, look what they're doing.
Absolutely.
And this was years ago.
But they did want the arts and physical education and help.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Well, Molly was an arts major. I mean, she went on to Sweetbrier, which...
Yay!
And then, Meg went on to, you know, LSU, and math, in the math program. So, I had both ends of it, I could see, I saw it personally.
Sure.
I can only see that it's going forward in the same direction. I hope so, anyway. I'm sorry, we digress, Ms. Forbes. Thank you.
I, it makes me so happy to hear the discussions, and it puts so much more meaning into, into this, and what it can do for our students, so I appreciate it. So, graduation rate, we discussed, that's pretty self-explanatory, and these are the points possible. It looks at the four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate. It also captures students who might graduate in five years as well. And that's also calculated, which I think is a really nice thing, because sometimes we catch students perhaps in the summer, and they're considered a five-year graduate, or they maybe needed some extra coursework, but they're still going through the system, they're getting their diploma, and they're gonna go be successful in life. So, I appreciate that Maryland looks at those five-year graduates as well. The Readiness for Post-Secondary Success, so, this one looks at our, this is high schools only, and it looks at students who are considered on track in ninth grade, and that has to do with earning credits and kind of those core, those core courses that are listed. It also goes back to the well-rounded curriculum. And I, the next slide actually captures a big list for this Readiness for Post-Secondary Success of the many, many things that a student could do, they just have to do one in order to be considered getting the credit for the well-rounded curriculum for this indicator. And these are a much more comprehensive list.
We have a lot of students that have done all of these things.
Oh, multiple, yes. You have students who practically do the whole list. And I also wanted to highlight, you know, towards the end of this list, we have the Seal of Biliteracy, which Mr. Bell had just highlighted, which is another way students can show, earn that credit for a well-rounded. And there's many, many great things, the CTE programs, the scores on the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, the ASVAB test, that's also considered, because these are all indicators that, you know, when students graduate, they've not only earned their diploma, but they're, you know, on a certain pathway that's gonna lead them to success later in life. The Certificate of Program Completion, I think it's wonderful that Maryland incorporates this as well. So, this is looking at our students with IEPs who may not be on a diploma track, but they're on a Certificate of Program Completion. So, they're doing a different way to complete high school, but also recognizing that for all of our students, you know, that post-secondary success is really important. So, there's ways for that to be recognized in this system as well. And not every state does that. And so, I just, I really applaud Maryland for including that in the accountability system. And so, if you want to take a look, you can visit the Maryland Report Card website. And if you, the easiest way to get there for a member of the public is just to go onto Google and type in Maryland Report Card. It's gonna take you to this website right here. And you, on the very first page, this is how it looks, you can just select a county from the dropdown, or you can just begin to type in the name of a school, and it will populate. And here's an example of one of the report cards. This is what comes up for Graysonville Elementary School. And you can see, again, in the top right, you have the number of stars, the big percentage point is how they earned that. And then, there's, it's, each school, it's about a two-page report, and it goes through how they earn those points. And then, of course, what we always like to see is, well, how did our schools do? And so, this captures two years of star ratings, the percentile ranking earned, and the percent of total earned points that our schools earned for the past two years. When looking at these, I just wanted to point out that the earned points possible, the possible points do differ from last year. So, sometimes when we're doing direct comparisons, we're not comparing exactly the same thing, because there's some components that are new this year. So, just something to keep in mind. As you can see, all of our schools are rated four or five stars, with one exception, which is Sudlersville Elementary. And they actually earned 59.86 points, and they're 0.14% away from being a four-star school, so they are very close. I even contacted the Maryland State Department and said, do you round up? And they don't. But they are so very close. And that is our one school who earned a three. And you can see they took, they made tremendous growth from the prior year. And just the percentile rankings across the board, when compared to other schools in Maryland, are just so high. So, lots of great things to highlight, yeah.
Just a question, not to be the naysayer here, but seven of these 14 schools went down in their percentage.
They did. Yes.
Half of them went down. And I was just wondering, is it, 'cause everything has changed the second year around?
You know, each, each school is different. We shared this data with school leaders. We had some of the data embargoed back in November and shared it with them, and they really started digging into some of it. Some of our schools who had star ratings, we were able to, I was able to work with them, and we looked at the data a little more deeply to really try to isolate where some of those changes happened. For some, it had to really do, one of the trends we noticed jumping out was just student growth in English Language Arts and Mathematics. So, that's something that those schools are focusing on, but they are really able to look a little more closely. And again, it is challenging, because I think the tricky component is that the possible points differed from last year to this year, so there are new components, like when we're doing those direct comparisons. But you're right, we did have some schools decrease, and I know that's certainly something that they're really looking at and focusing on. And if you go to the next slide, that's something that I highlighted here, just as part of the conclusions. So, we did have some ratings decrease. One of those was Centerville Middle School, and it was the difference of one percentage point. They went from 75% to 74%, and it was actually 74.22. So, some were just really, really close on where those cut points are for the star ratings. But professional development has already been provided to those school leaders, and is continuing to be provided, so they can really take this, you know, and make some actionable steps with their campus, because, just to continue supporting their students and growth on their campuses. And that's really the intention of the report cards, is to support that growth and look at improvement, because it benefits all students.
I mean, I look at this, and then when you say, everything's not apples and apples, you know, last year wasn't the same, so...
Right.
It's kind of hard, then, to make a real good judgment. But does this show you anything? But does this show you anything? I mean, we're doing some things very good. And like Bev said, we got a couple of things that digress somewhat. Do we understand why, or?
You know.
And I'm not talking 1%, but some of them are 4% or 5%, you know? And to be honest with you, you look at Sudersville, yes, it's only 59, but it came up from 51. So to me, that looks like a positive. But then when I see something else, you know, that goes, you know, from a 78 down to a 70, that to me, we're still a 70. But why were we 78, and now all of a sudden we're 70?
Yeah, and that's test scores.
Well, and so, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, please, Dr. Kane.
Anybody. So, and yeah, so when we look at the individual school, and we can all look at that, because it's all online, you can see the areas that they earned their points, or where they decreased in their points. So we can be specific. So if it had something to do with the school survey, which we did not count last year, then, you know, that's one difference. But it could have had something to do with test scores in one area or another area. You can go up in one area, you can go down in another. You know, we can say what we want to say, but the good thing about this accountability system is that growth piece. So you do have an opportunity to see, even if you aren't meeting, if you are showing growth. And that's a good thing. So that's one of the reasons why we really focus on disaggregating our data. So we've said a million times, across the district, we look great, we're one of the highest-scoring districts in the state, but when you peel back those layers, and when you start to look at the performance of different student groups, that's where you see where there are some gaps, and there's work that has to be done. And that's part of the focus that we have.
That's what I like to hear, because, I mean, it's good to see numbers.
Yeah.
But we need to look at the numbers and how to improve.
That's right, disaggregate it.
You can always, once you're number one, you've got nowhere else to go. But if you're always moving up, that's to me a sign of a.
Correct. Who's learning and who's not, and why?
And what steps we take to help them.
Correct.
That's the more important piece to my mind.
Mm-hmm.
What are the steps that we're taking to help those students? Sorry, I'm interrupting.
No, that's great. It's a great discussion. So, yeah, and that basically summarizes the different components. We're continuing, again, to work with school leadership all year on this, and we've really been working with them and helping them come to those conclusions again, so that they can make the best decisions for their students and hope to see that student improvement. So, thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
Last line.
And great things are happening in Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
You are. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, anyone else question?
Yes, Captain Kelly.
This is labor-intensive, the data collection. How does that work, the data collection?
It's a lot of data input from everyone. It's a lot of input at the school sites. There's a lot of, like, auditing and checking of that data, and then that data is pulled in these very comprehensive files and reported to the state. So there's a lot of different people who really contribute to that, from, like I said, from the school level to the district office, like, there's the principals, everyone.
That's up to you, because I can only imagine.
Yeah. It's a lot, yeah. There's a lot of data collections.
Can I just add one quick thing? It's just to recognize, Mrs. Forbes, for not only the work that she leads, but to your point, Captain Kelly, what her and her staff do is try to break all this down and make it easy and manageable for principals and schools to understand it and then be able to use it to make a change. And some of that is, it takes time. In fact, tomorrow's professional development with principals is going to be on the school survey. So they're going to get all that data tomorrow afternoon. So I just want to recognize her, because that's a lot of work in order to prepare that, so it makes it easier for principals. And I think that's the whole role that we play, is supporting schools and principals, and there's a real-life example.
And can I just add one thing? And recall that Mrs. Forbes just got here this school year. So she speaks as if she's been in Maryland and understands Maryland accountability since forever, but she just arrived here this school year, so we're really grateful for her leadership and to have her here.
From a different state.
Absolutely.
And it is such a pleasure to be here, and I really just enjoy the work. So thank you for the opportunity, too.
We're grateful that you're here. Thank you. Good night. Our next item is a break. So would you like to take the break and come back about 7:50? 7:50, is that all right with everyone?
7:40.
7:40, yeah.
7:45? Okay, thank you.
7:40.
And we're back. Welcome to our board meeting. So much fun. Next up is Human Resources Report. It's good. Do I have a motion to accept the Human Resources Report as reported in closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept the Human Resources Report that was given in closed session. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mrs. Bass. Appreciate that. Policy and Regulations to repeal from our November 4th meeting, I apologize, number six, November 6, 2019, fire drills, flag display, interscholastic athletics, physical examination, leaving money at school, payroll deductions. Have we had any questions or comments?
We have not, Ms. Harper. We have not received any public comment.
And so now for our approval to repeal.
Correct. We would be requesting 8.02, superintendent would be requesting of the board to approve those policies to be repealed.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Only question, I asked this earlier, or before we discussed this, the flag thing, nothing different, we still display flags, it's like we always do, and so just cleaning it up.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha.
As part of this, Mr. Peluski, do you know if I have to say every single policy title and number in order for this to be repealed, or can we just do a, just as a matter of legal?
That's probably a Mr. Burns question.
In order for the, to repeal each of these policies and regulations, do I need to say them each individually by the policy number?
Ms. Harper, Darren Burns, Board Counsel, you can take the same approach you would do with bundling several contracts, just entertain a motion to take them as a group. Once that motion's approved, then you do the actual.
Okay, so I will say the policies and their numbers for clarification.
Then just take a motion to pull them together, and then one motion.
Okay, thank you very much. So any other questions or comments by the board? Do I have a motion to accept the repealing of these following policies? Fire drills 212, flag display 213, interscholastic athletics 214, physical examination 216, leaving money at school 304, and payroll deductions 305. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. And if you have any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion for the repealing of all the aforementioned policies and their numbers. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Burns. Policies for second read, 104, Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy and Regulation Any questions or comments on those, Mr. Peluski?
No, ma'am, Madam President.
Is that the email I just got at about 3 o'clock today?
Correct. From Dr. Kane, that the state commission has approved the, what we're proposing as our ethics and conflict of interest policy and regulation.
So this is, we're not taking any action tonight, though?
Correct.
Can I ask, is this the copy that we just sent over? Is it the first one, or this latest one with all the corrections? That they've approved?
Yeah, I believe it's this one that they have approved.
I have a letter here just saying that it approved the proposed changes in the ethics policy for our jurisdiction as being equivalent. Equivalent, yes, everything.
Yes, and then, and that's where I had to seek clarification on the second one, because they refer to something that was in policy, and in, in fact, it was actually in the regulation in the section under procurement. So we had clarified that.
Well, yeah, but procurement's different from ethics, so we're doing ethics at the moment, correct?
No, I'm referring to the letter sent to us by the State Ethics Commission approving what we're proposing, but one of the things they want to draw our attention to was the 2000 legislature in 2016 did not require that procurement component. And that's all they were pointing out to us. And so when I asked the clarifying question, it wasn't in our policy, it was actually in the regulation section.
And there's nothing wrong with it.
Nothing, absolutely.
It wasn't required.
But we can't have it in ours.
Yes. And that was the regulation, not the policy, anyway.
And that's perfectly fine, so.
And that's covered in a separate policy?
It's regulation. The policy and then the regulation. It's in the regulation, it's that it's not necessary, but we have it in our regulation anyway, and unless we choose to change it, it'll stay there. So without further ado, sending it out for second read. Any questions or comments from the board on sending it out for second read? Do I have a motion to send the one, Policy 104, Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy out for second read?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to send Policy 104, Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy out for second read. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Peluski.
Thank you, Ms. Harper.
And now 8.04, Field Trips to North Bay Adventure Camp, Sudersville Middle School, Centerville Middle School, Mr. Peluski, June 1st to June 3rd, yea?
Yes, ma'am. Just requesting action item 8.04. We finally, it's taken us five years, but we've got all these field trips to North Bay in one action item. And as you know, this is a.
Big deal.
Yes, it is. It's a very big deal. It's part of our environmental literacy plan for our students to experience. This is, as you all know, it's very popular, but it's what they learn while they're there as part of their environmental literacy project in grade six. So our request is that all of our middle schools attend either in the June 1st to 2nd, or the June 3rd to 5th.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Smith, I don't think you know what North Bay is all about.
But I've read this.
You're welcome to attend.
I can always use another chaperone, Miss Smith, if you'd like to go.
Correct?
It's not in February, that's accurate.
Both North Bay field trips.
I'm just making sure that I have them all here to sign over.
Four of them.
Yeah, I have five here, but I'm just making sure I have the right one. Okay, that's that one. Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the field trips to North Bay Adventure Camp, Sudersville Middle School, Centerville Middle School, June 1st to June 3rd, 2020? And then Stevensville Middle School and Mattapeak Middle School, June 3rd to June 5th, 2020?
So moved.
And a second? I have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments on the motion?
It's in the budget.
This is all, this is done by grants, correct?
Correct. Or raised fundraisers.
Fundraisers.
Absolutely. And if there's an economically disadvantaged child, the PTA will often, they'll fund.
The ways to subsidize somebody that needs to be.
Correct. Want to make sure that every child has the opportunity to attend, and they do.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
Any other further questions and comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept all the field trips to North Bay Adventure Camp from June 1st to June 5th of year 2020. All those in favor, raise your hand by, saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next is a field trip, field trip number 1837, Kent Island High School Cheer Team to Ocean City. This is for February 22nd, 2020, to February 23rd, 2020, an overnight Reach the Beach Cheerleading Competition at the Ocean City Convention Center.
Yes, ma'am. The request permission to attend Reach the Beach competition, as you mentioned, the dates are the 22nd to the 23rd of February. There are 15 athletes that will be participating. There's three chaperones who are all teachers, and they've, everything has been allocated through either fundraisers, or due to little buck experience, so they've raised the money for it to help accommodate the cost of the program.
And a shout-out to Molly Huestead, I know who she is, great gal, thank you for doing this. And the cost per student, $105, which they've all raised.
That's been taken care of fundraising.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments by the board? Do I have a motion to accept the trip number 1837 from the Kent Island High School Cheer Team to Ocean City?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept field trip number 1837, Kent Island High School Cheer Team to Ocean City on February 22nd, 2020. All those in favor, raise your hand, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Bender. Contracts for Approval, JLW Communications LLC. Mr. Pfister?
JLW, JLW is, Communications is the contractor that we use to do public information. So he does, covers our great stories that, some of which you hear throughout the evening. Some of those are Mr. Bell. Some of those come from Mr. White. He also does our press releases, all those kinds of things. And we contract with him at $3,000 per month. It has, he has been with us since January, I'm sorry, June, well, he was with us January, I think, of last year. But we want to continue his contract through June at the end of this year.
See the consultant agreement. Did we by chance bid this out? Was it?
No.
Not something that's bid out? Okay.
It doesn't, it hasn't reached that level. What we do is we use the funding for that position, that communication specialist position to fund this contract.
So we have that position funded in our current budget?
Will this exceed the current budget?
No, ma'am.
No.
Line item, okay.
What is the long-term plan for this?
Well, again, I will be bringing that PIO reorganization proposal to the board for consideration, because our current structure for the Public Information Office does not meet the needs that we have for that office. So the plan is to reorganize it so that it meets our needs, but there is a fiscal impact with that. We brought it before. We weren't able to approve it because of the fiscal impact, but we're going to bring it again, and because that, this role, this work is important.
I see it here, Mr. Pfister, it says budget source, operating budget. Is that operating budget 2019-20?
Yeah, the current operating budget, the 2020 operating budget.
Does that need to be on here? Does it need to say 2019-2020? So that doesn't go beyond that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it should.
Okay, so do you want to revise that, and then I'll sign it?
Sure. You know, I understand we need somebody, but as we go through our budget, we've got to look at both the cost of it.
Absolutely.
What else we can do with it, because there's going to be a lot of issues we have, and just anything outside the box, and I know everybody's overworked and underpaid, but, you know, if somehow we can do it, some, you know, some way to be as efficient as we can, because I think we're going to have some real tough budget decisions.
And the option that we're doing right now is the most efficient way to get the work And the option that we're doing right now is the most efficient way to get the work done, which is because we can't not have the work be done. So, that's why we're taking the approach that we're taking right now, but it is a position that we need in the district. And so, I'm going to bring back a proposal for you and we just take a look at it and see what we can figure out.
So, the most cost-effective at this moment is to have this rather than having a full-time employee because obviously we just can't.
The way we currently have the communications work structured is a clerical position, and this is not a clerical job. And so, we've hired, we've advertised, we've hired, we've lost that employee. It is an overwhelming amount of work for a clerical position. It's not clerical.
And we have nobody capable in-house now to do it?
We don't.
I've got a question, though. This is 36,000 and we're meeting our needs with this.
As a contract.
We have, we have a whole lot more that could be done if we had a position. This is settling on what we can get done with the funds that we have available, but if we had a position, there's a whole lot more that that position would engage in to really get the story out, to advertise our work, to ensure that we're collaborating. Recall that I really wanted to, you know, combine this PIO work with the partnership office because we have no one currently to organize the work of our partners. So, there's a, and I'll bring it forward to you again, as I mentioned, but there is a whole component of work that we are missing that really needs to be done in this district.
Mr. Pfister, it says here fiscal impact 15,000 from February to June, total 2020 impact of 36,000, so.
Because, because he's currently contracted, so there's the bridge between what we're currently contracted with.
But this contract ends June 30th of 2020.
Yeah, so we've already, we've already paid $18,000.
Which was in 2019.
No, since July, 2019 calendar year. I'm sorry, I'm in fiscal year.
Sorry, sorry.
Yes, same fiscal year, calendar year.
Okay.
July 1/19 to December 31st, $18,000. We're currently contracted for January. Now, because of the amount we're requesting approval to continue this contract through the end of the year. So, the total 2020 impact from dollars is 36,000. But we've already expended 18.
Because it'll be over 25,000.
January through June will get us another 18.
Okay.
But we're already committed in January.
But you said it's, wait, I don't get it. Total is 36,000. You're asking for 15.
We've already paid.
15 and 18 is 23,000 or?
You have the month of January. The month of January. So, we've expended through December 31st, 18,000. We have the month of January that we're sort of obligated for. So, there's 21 plus the 15 for the four other months gets you the 36.
So, we're, we're paying for January.
We haven't paid for this month yet.
We have paid for January.
We, we've already paid, paid to December. We will pay him for January because it's in the contract. What we're doing is February on, so that 21 and then 15, that's 38.
He's getting 3,000 a month. There's 12 months in a year, and he's been here, he'll be here a year come July the 1st.
Okay, yes.
And then the question is.
Actually, it started last year in January.
Well, what, the previous budget.
Right.
That was a different school.
Different fiscal year. Trick is, you know, okay, we need somebody.
We need it.
We need somebody better, but we also are limited in funds of how we're going to do it.
Correct.
So, this could be another budget item we can put in our little pot.
Well, just a lot of stuff, but you'll get me a corrected piece of paper before I sign this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, any other questions from the board about this position?
The only thing I would say, what's our policy? Is it after 25 we bid or what's the bid?
Correct, so it hasn't gotten to 25.
But it has now.
But it will, but it will, and that's why we're bringing it now.
Okay, but it's not going to be bid this year, but I think if it's, if by some chance that we do this again next year, then it would have to be bid.
If we bid this out for our actual PIO, it's going to be a whole lot more than 36,000. That's why we need the position to be righted. We need the position to reflect the work that needs to be done.
We do, but I guess what concerns me in some, and maybe not this one, but this could be an example of it. We have a procurement of 25 that's supposed to be bid. Well, we take two 12 and a halfs to get to 25, or two 13s to get to 26. You know, we just, you know what I mean? We need to, I think at a certain level, we need to know where we are. That's all for accountability.
So, you're expecting three people to do the job that one person could do? I'm just asking if that's how you were splitting it up.
What did I say, three?
What are you talking about?
I thought he was talking that we were splitting it up for three different people.
We are splitting, this one we're splitting because we're only using, what is it? 21 now and we did it, all he's saying is we can't be taking this and splitting it up and saying, oh, we don't need to bid it for that.
What I'm saying is, I don't want us to get into the circle of 25 is where we are, so we bid it at 15, then we come back, or don't bid it. Sign a contract, 15 then 15. At some point, I knew this one's dragged on, we couldn't find somebody, there's circumstances, but you know, you don't want to.
Created a policy in the middle of this one.
And we created, and it can't be a totally thing.
And I will apologize about parliamentary procedure. We should really have had a motion made before we started to have our discussion. I apologize. So, I'm going to try and correct that.
The board's looking for your job.
Anyway, I, I'm a newbie. Not, okay. So, any other questions or comments? So, do I have a motion to accept the contract for J L W Communications starting February 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020, for the fiscal impact of $15,000 from the current operating budget?
So moved.
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to accept the contract with J L W Communications with the previously mentioned items. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Pfister. Thanks, Dr.
Thank you.
Contract for approval, W G M Architect Interiors Feasibility Study. Ms. Pullen, thank you for sticking around. I apologize, you know, Mr. Smith drags these things out.
Happy to be here.
So, what do we have now, ma'am?
Good evening. President Harper, members of the board, Dr. Kane and executive team. For the record, my name is Carla Pullen. I'm the facilities planner for Queen Anne's County Public Schools. I'm here this evening to request your approval for a contract with W G M Architecture and Interiors to conduct a feasibility study for the Board of Education Central Office Building. This is just a preliminary study that will determine the future needs for the central office. This was funded in our fiscal year 2020 budget from the county commissioners and the amount is $89,915. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
First, can I have a motion to accept the contract for W G M Architect Interiors? Fiscal impact 89,915 from the FY 2020 capital.
For discussion, yes.
Dr. Kane. I have a motion and a second. Discussion can begin. Any questions or comments?
We have Centerville Middle School in the horizon for renovation.
Correct.
I don't know if that plays into part of this building moving there. I don't want to make any comments what I've heard earlier this evening, so you can tell me what you want to, what you feel free to say. I just got concerns that we're looking at this building to, I don't know, we got the cart before the horse or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, a lot of things besides just saying, here's a good idea for $89,000. I mean, it's a major, I'm probably talking millions of dollars.
Yes, that's true. We do have two studies that were funded last year. The central office building is one. Feasibility study and ed spec development for Centerville Middle School is another, and that's one that we're getting ready to undertake. Both of those are going to look at different items. This is essentially looking at an office building, more of a corporate entity, if you will, where the school will be done under separate contract because the first thing that we need to do is develop ed specs at that building. What do we need? What programmatic needs do we have over there? And so, we're doing those in two separate efforts. The cart before the horse, understandably, the information that we've gotten from the county commissioners is that they are interested in looking at the funding for the central office building in a timeline that is before Centerville Middle School, and that has to do with some of the other things that they're funding within the county. And so, they've requested that we have this study done for the central office building as soon as possible.
So, this study is going to include not only renovating this building, but the possibility of building a new building?
Correct. Yes, we will look at.
The structure here, see what they have to modify to make it up to code?
Yes, we'll be looking at the.
Well, is design the new one or just?
No, this will just be a study. It will look at code compliance, it will look at the site, it will look at the actual structure and how well it meets the programmatic needs for what we have now. And then it will look at cost of both options, too.
Are there any grants associated with building a new office for just the admin?
Probably not through the state. Grant-wise, there may be some federal options that are available depending on what types of programs we determine will be included in the central office building.
So, if we put a parent and child or the Judy Center or we take a rise.
Correct. There may be some funding options otherwise that are available, but otherwise it will be a county-funded project.
So, our last building, which we don't want to go into, I mean, we're not talking, well, we're not talking about a school, so 25 million, it won't, it won't be even near.
No. The very, very early estimates that we did for just an office building to just look at the, the office and that entity is probably in the area of 10 to 11 million dollars.
Isn't there an empty building over there on that road headed to the 4H? Is that an empty office building over there?
Soon as you turn it off.
Yeah, right there by the garage?
It's occupied.
Is it occupied?
Of course, it could technologies and I think.
We've got plenty of empty space down there in Ken Island at some of those places.
Is this taking the place of the Centerville? Are the county commissioners funding, you're saying they're funding this before the Centerville Middle? It's not taking the place of the?
No, no.
They want to fund a new building here, and it's not their decision to put priorities on that.
It is actually. No, actually it is.
How we put our capital plan, what we decide to do?
Well, there was an opportunity with a certain window with regard to funding, and they spoke with us. We met with them and they were interested in us moving forward as, as soon as possible.
They've talked to you?
Yes.
I mean, I haven't been privy to any of this.
Yes, this was, that was one of the things that we had discussed with the county commissioners.
So, we're going to agree to sit there and put the Board of Education Central Office in front of the Centerville Middle School?
That is what they would like, yes.
Then we got to decide what we like.
That is true, but in the meantime, this is budgeted and the study would help to tell us what needs to be done here.
Yeah, but I mean, is this going to qualify, and I'm not trying to put you, it's not your problem.
Understand.
It is because she's going to have to help.
Right, and the work.
She's going to help, but it's this board's decision, not, I mean, she's the bearer of good news and bad news or whatever. But what I see is, you know, you've got this building sitting here, you're going to have to do something with it one way or the other. Or you've got a Centerville Middle School down the road across there. Are we going to renovate that or not? Or would we move into that building?
Right, and that's what I was getting ready to say. The work still is continuing for the feasibility study for Centerville Middle. So, that doesn't stop. They didn't ask us, it's not as if the commissioners asked us, drop that for now and move to the central office. That still, that plan still continues, so, and that study has to be done as well. And that's, the results of that study will say, should that building be renovated? Should there be a new building? Just like the same thing for central office. Should it be renovated? Should it be a new building? They look at the needs. You know, so both of those things are happening. I don't want you to think that one is trumping the other.
I thought that's what you just said, though, that I misunderstood.
I thought they said the county commissioners wanted to.
It's trumping it because of the opportunity for them to pay for the building now. They won't be getting, that's why I brought it up. They won't be getting any grant funds from the state to do a central office building. We will get funds from state and federal funding, building funds to help do Centerville Middle School.
Because children are in that building.
Saying the, the, in action, the study's done, and the study's done, then they're going to give us the money to do the central office before they give us the money to do Centerville.
Well, the feasibility study is being done for this to be done as soon as possible, yes.
Right, but that's what you're saying.
Because the county has the money to do this, yes.
To do the study.
To also do the building or the renovation.
Okay, so they are putting that building ahead of Centerville Middle.
There's a lot of things in the pipeline that they have going on, and this is what they have asked us to do.
Would it make any sense to have this and the middle school, are the same people working on this?
No.
Would it, I mean, then you got, I mean, are they talk, I mean, then you got one study here, one study, and then somebody's going to say, well, we didn't think about that. We could maybe, I just.
I think one important point to think about here is when you're looking at Centerville Middle School, we're limited on land, all right? So, Centerville Middle School is going to either be a true renovation at the, you know, facility or it is going to be torn down and built basically in between the current middle school and the warehouse there. Really, are the only two options with that because the county doesn't have land for us purchased to go, hey, we're going to move Centerville Middle School to such and such road out there. So, it's going to be limited on what can be done at Centerville Middle School as far as just an overall renovation, which is going to be tough with many, many portables, as you know. Or can we construct that building while the students are still in that, you know, and then like they just did down North Dorchester High School. That worked out fairly well.
So, promise me that we don't buy a million-dollar portable association to put in the back of that school to put our students in, to have, promise me. We're not going to do that again.
No.
Okay, sorry, I'm digressing.
They were free at Stevensville.
There's no free lunch. Somebody's paying for it.
We did. It's county did. Yes, we did. Okay, so.
I just feel better, my personal feeling, having this somewhere tied in more with Centerville Middle School was a more planned together rather than having this one and this one because I just don't.
It's two totally different projects.
Is the money in the capital, Mr. Pfister, for the feasibility study for Centerville Middle right now?
Yes. Both, both feasibility studies were in the FY 20 capital budget.
And don't forget with the feasibility studies, particularly with the school, take a lot longer because you're going to have to get the community input. You have all of those different groups, you know, taken into account along with the ed specs, which take a lengthy amount of time. I don't mean to.
Last time the feasibility took, what, eight months, didn't it?
We're expecting that it's probably going to take anywhere from a year to a year and a half. By the time we get in community engagement, by the time, and really, the two different studies are very different animals with expertise that are needed from different types of firms. So, what may work very well with the expertise in looking at this building may not be the same as someone who has the expertise of working with a middle school that is in a district the size of ours that has some very particular parameters. This one is a little bit more broad.
So, is it possible, Ms. Pullen, since you're the one that's going to have to be doing this, we go ahead and do this now and then Centerville Middle, we approve it to be in April, maybe?
We absolutely can, and we can even put the parameters in there that if they are being done by different firms, that we have a collaboration between the two so that we aren't missing any steps along the way.
Does that make you feel better, having it done sooner?
I just think it doesn't need, I mean, it just seems like we're rushing it pretty quickly for a little bit of knowledge I know. And I'm only getting my knowledge from the last 10 minutes of here.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't feel, but that's, I'm only one. There's four, three people up here, four people.
Captain Kelly, how do you feel about it?
I'm just looking ahead at what comes first and so, but the feasibility studies can clearly be done. I'm willing to approve that, obviously, if they're going to pay for it. But, but as far as building it and doing it, I don't want to have.
That's another year.
And again, this is just the study to give us some more information as to which way to go.
Okay.
And if it is even feasible, if it's something that we want to undertake, we just want to get that information behind us so we can make good decisions moving forward.
Ms. Morse, you have any questions?
Now, I feel this is a great opportunity. Oh, I'm 100% on board.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract for W G M Architecture and Interiors for $89,915 coming from the FY 2020 capital budget. All of those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you very much, Ms. Pullen.
Thank you.
For hanging around, letting us know. Emergency purchase, 8.07, John W. Teeter, generator and transfer switch, Mr. Pender.
Yes, ma'am. Churchill Elementary School, we have nursed the generator as long, for as long as we can, and it is no longer functioning. The generator covers all of the life safety aspects, the emergency lighting, the, you know, telephone systems when they go down, also the walk-in freezer, walk-in refrigerator. So, it is a major item for us to replace in a quick manner. And we are seeking approval for John Teeter, who we have worked with before on many projects and who has experience with installing the generators. For, the contract would be for $47,980, and that would come out of our FY 19 fund balance. We did, I did reach out and Mr. O'Donnell to other companies to try to get other prices. Boland, who's a great corporation, is doing Fayside Elementary School right now. Hey, we don't have the time. We can't accommodate your request right now. A third party never even responded back to us. I will say, speaking to another company, they thought that that price was adequate for what, I just want to make sure, what we were paying for. So, I feel very comfortable with the quote, and this is something that we need to go ahead and do because I, each day is ticking away with that, so. We do, and just so you know, we do service all of our generators quarterly in-house. We inspect them. And this one, like I said, it's 22 years old, so it's about hit that point.
Do our maintenance guys feel comfortable with this kind of generator?
Yes.
I mean, they. Everyone's got, I mean, it's all good for us to make a decision, but everyone's got to work on it.
I talked, Jeff Rizley is the main mechanic on them, and he stands behind this Cummins generator.
Okay.
And along with Jim O'Donnell, and also our electrician recommended this one also, so.
And how soon can it be installed?
I got to call them. I'm hoping a couple of weeks, I mean, to get it out here. They're supposed to have.
Can't have school without the generator.
That's what I'm saying. They're supposed to have some surplus left over after the end of the year right now, so. I just want to kind of get it out there. I can make a call tomorrow to see, hey, we have this approved, but it was also hard to get a company that would commit to the timeline of getting it put in here, so.
I apologize, board members. I did it again. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to accept the purchase approval of a 70-kilowatt Cummins generator and transfer switches for Churchill Elementary School, the fiscal amount of $47,980 from the FY 19 fund balance?
So moved.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote on the motion to purchase a 70-kilowatt Cummins generator from John Teeter Incorporated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you, sir. Hopefully, they can get that in soon. For informational purposes, expenditure report.
Thank you.
Me, yeah.
Board members, Dr. Kane, Ms. Harper, thank you very much. Before you tonight is the monthly expenditure report for the period ending December 31st, included as a summary and a detailed report for your information. No actions necessary. As you can see, currently, all categories are in a positive balance, but if you recall, last month during my absence, our special ed category was in a negative balance, and we had discussions as to how we would facilitate either through a categorical transfer or analysis of making sure where we could fund some additional items or that things were charged appropriately. After some research upon my return, I was able to charge a portion of the Midshore Special Ed Consortium, which is noted in the transfer column, that we were able to charge that overage that we unanticipated, you know, when we got the bill in the beginning of the year, to some restricted Medicaid funds. These funds can only, these restricted Medicaid funds can only be used for direct services to students, and using these funds for this purpose is appropriate. So, that brings us back by using those funds of $111,000. That brings us back into a positive balance. We still have an ongoing concern in special ed related to the cost of our non-public placements, which may force us back into a negative situation as we progress further in the year, but I am continuing a further analysis in the special ed with not only my staff, but the special ed staff to make sure that all charges are appropriately classified. ed staff, to make sure that all charges are appropriately classified, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And just as a side note, we were in one, within 1% of the same status as last year. We were 89.54 spent last year, we're at 90.07% spent this year, so we're right in line as to where we were last year.
So, the contracted services you're talking about under?
Be under the transfers in special education.
Okay, well, can I direct your attention to the line of 2,000 contracted services? We're in the negative, $21,000. Is that just timing? I'm salaries, wages.
Yes.
Contract. Show you.
I'm pulling, I thought it was 2,000. No, I know, there it is. I'm sorry, I had the wrong one up on my screen.
I'm under expenditure status report.
Yes, you're in administration, so what that's reflected of is the, is the change from a contracted director of HR to a salary, and we need to transfer those funds.
Thank you, sir.
Also related to the public information contract that you just restored, so now that you've approved that contract, I will make the transfer, the internal transfer between the two, which will be part of next month's transfer notice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Did we transfer money into special ed last month, last time?
No.
We hadn't made a transfer yet.
No.
So, you're going to cover it through Medicare this, this way?
Yes, so what has happened is, instead of that expenditure hitting the operating budget, it's now hit the restricted Medicaid fund, basically grant fund or Medicaid, because we had some leftover funds that's accumulated over years. Now, this is a one-time fix, this certainly isn't an ongoing funding source, as we've talked about ad nauseam, what we can do with fund balance. Grants, and especially the Medicaid, have very specific rules as to what this can be used for, and to sum it all up, direct services. Well, the services we get from the special ed consortium are direct services, so I'm feel very comfortable that this is most appropriate to do so. And it extends our ability to give us a little bit further time. I think we're still going to require a transfer into special ed, mainly because of the non-publics. I believe we have three additional students this year than what we had last year, budget remaining approximately the same. Again, we'll have those budget discussions because next year we could have three less, but we could have six more next year as well. So, that's always going to be a variable in this particular budget cycle.
And you're looking in a consortium to find out if that's for next year's budget, if it's appropriate for us to stay in it or maybe do some-
Yes, so the fortunate part is our Jolene Smith is in charge of that consortium or is leading that consortium, so I will be having discussions with her to see what their anticipated costs were going to be. Now, keep in mind, Talbot County just hired a new CFO, so there's going to be a learning curve from, for them to get their feet wet, because they're the fiscal agent for the Midshore Special Ed Consortium. So, we'll be working closely with them to make sure that what they can provide us is an accurate projection of what our costs are going to be next year.
And are we getting the best bang for our buck, or is there another avenue for us to go, not being in that consortium?
According to Ms. Smith, currently, this is the best avenue for our resources.
And have we ever, I mean, taken a 5,000 or 10,000 view of special ed to see if we could do some different things to this, you know? I know everything's different, and every client or student is different, but do we ever look at that?
Yes, we do, however, there's a federal requirement and also a state requirement of maintenance of effort specifically to special ed category. So, even if we were to find huge efficiencies, one of the things, one of the hurdles that we would have to jump is justify why we are spending less in special ed in the subsequent year than we are in the current year. We're under federal rule to spend at least $1 more next year's special ed budget than we are in this special ed budget. Giving salaries and everything, it's never really an issue.
Even if we don't have the same student bodies here.
Yes, so-
If they move out of our, out of our county, then we have no control over that.
Then there are special exceptions, and there's a list of them, only about four of them. One of them is, is that, or in the case of the non-public, if for some reason, next year, we have no non-publics and that reduces our maintenance of effort, we'd be able to apply and get a waiver for that. But as far as regular structure, yeah, we're limited in needing to spend $1 more in the subsequent year than we do in the current year.
Not that I don't think that's a dumb idea, but it's the federal government, and, I mean, it's our money, but there's nothing that I probably can do that today. But even if we could find a better way to save money, we could maybe have more services, even if we spent it to our people, and, okay, I'll buy the thing that we got to spend $1 more, which I don't like, but I'll buy that, but we could then do a better job for our students in Queen Anne's County and spend, we'd be spending money, but in a more appropriate way. Have we ever done a look at that?
Yeah, I mean, I could defer to Mr. Paluski and his work, I mean, that's, or Dr. Kane, and to see what actually has been done.
Yeah, and part of the issue is, and especially with ESMC, the consortium, is that there, the folks aren't out there. So, the positions that we need, as you know about the psychologists, they-
I'm a contractor.
All of that, they are not out there to employ. So, and if they were, then that'd make it easier for us, and we'd employ them, but we can't find them, Talbot can't find them, they just aren't there. And so, you know, if we, we have to weigh whether or not, if we move ourselves, remove ourselves from the consortium, what would happen with those employees that we currently share? Would they just decide to not come on board with Queen Anne's County and just stay with the consortium, which would put us at a worse deficit? And we are compelled by law to service the students, so we have to have employees. So, that's why we've taken that hard look two years in a row, and it just would suit us to, it would benefit us to continue with it. With regard to, I think you're talking about the efficiency of the services that we do provide, and yes, and we're audited by the State Department with regard to that and what type of gaps we have in student performance and all of that. We got a, an audit coming up in February for the early childhood part of special ed. So, we are, we are significantly audited, we have requirements with regard to the federal dollars that we spend, and we are, we're doing what we ought to be doing.